I brought the agenda on my phone.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting, the second meeting of the month of June for the Mount Vernon City Council. And we're going to call this meeting to order and ask for any additions or changes to the agenda a little before we vote.
One addition under discussion height on. Just want to make sure that council is aware of a grant application that we will be submitting for your inner urban trail. It's not a vote, it's just letters of work.
With that addition, I would move the agenda as.
Scott. Move the second to approve the agenda with the one to change. Will you prepare that agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now for the open communication part of the meeting. So, we're all whenever we're here tonight, whether you hear of the speak to any particular item in the agenda or just here in general. But this is the time if you've got any topic you want to address with council, you can do so at the podium, introduction and your name and so on, an address. If you're here for a certain item on that agenda, you've probably have seen the agenda from the back of the room, you can address when that item comes up in the agenda then. So, anybody here for a public comment in general? Hearing none, then we'll move to the consent agenda. And there's only one item, and that was minutes from the last meeting. Have I had a chance to review that?
Move forward with consent agenda as present.
Paul, your second?
Second.
Move the second to report the second agenda of the pool of minutes. All who have that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now to the public hearing part of the meeting, an official open public meeting. Public hearing for ordinance adopting chapter 28 Cemetery Commission of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code. Chris, you want to begin?
Yeah, so staff has been working, one couple volunteers who are actually in the audience tonight, to try and find the best pathway forward on the cemetery. Brief history, previous attorney basically had the city taking a very hands-off approach to the cemetery itself and didn't want city council or the city taking on projects outside of general maintenance. Hence new attorney and new opinion, and they believe that there is pathways forward to move or take corrective actions if certain processes are followed. So that was kind of answer one, and then answer two was how do we best allow those projects to move forward, give volunteers insurance, things of that nature. And we explored a number of different avenues, creating our separate 501(c)(3), operating under stroke preservation, just looking at a lot of different options. And what we finally kind of circled back on to is just creating a new commission. And the commission is very similar to the housing commissioner, planning and zoning commission in that they would be appointed by the council. They have a set powers and duties, or a volunteer board, but it would be a wing of the city at that point. So, the volunteers that would be potentially doing some corrective work out there would be covered under our umbrella. So, that's kind of the basis behind the creation of the cemetery commission. But what would be beneficial moving forward is they would make recommendations on capital projects that would need to happen. They could log volunteer hours at the cemetery as far as identification of cemls and other things that may have been damaged or need work. We can utilize the commission to help us notify family members or locate family members if there are any and kind of start a pathway of making some changes there. It's, I was like said, outside of mowing and doing the meeting, we really kind of gave a hands-off approach to it. So, Mary and Guy are here, and I'm assuming others are here if you have any questions. They did provide you some supporting documents with the ordinance, but it seems kind of a no-brainer.
At this time, invite anybody from a group to speak in this matter. Does it matter?
Please hit the button, yeah. Does it turn green there, Guy? There's a button in the center of the base. Should turn green.
Guy Booth, resident of Mount Vernon. This has been a project that has come from different sources. Historic preservation has always been concerned about the history of the cemetery, and there've been some people who have been very, very involved in bringing this to the public's attention. Mary Evans, of course, has given each of you a nice history of the cemetery. Janet Boudak has been very involved, and she was on historic preservation. But I think the impetus for this, I want to attribute to our local American Legion folks. Because they put a lot of effort into the memorial for veterans who are there, they felt that they had a reason to be making some monies available to make sure veterans' graves were well taken care of. And so that led us to think, well, how else? There are other people, other families that want to make sure grave sites of family members are taken care of. So, we've gone through this process, and I think Chris has described it well, that this may be the best way to do it because it's under the auspices of the city, and the city is the owner, and the city has already adopted the perpetual trust for maintenance of cemeteries. So, we can fit within that umbrella. And our objective is to, first of all, give advice to the city as to what kinds of repairs or maintenance needs to be made. We know the city's budget is somewhat limited, but we would also like to have the cemetery be something that really goes out to families, whether they live here or not, to take care of the place where their ancestors' remains are located. And so, I think that this commission is going to be able to put together a plan of how do we communicate with people who no longer live here that would like to be sure that family members' grave sites are taken care of and the cemetery remains in good shape. So, that's our objective. We think there can be some low-key fundraising. We know because of the history of the cemetery that there could be grants available, and through historic preservation, we do become familiar with cities. And I think now with the city's grant writers, you'd be able to help in this. So, there are a lot of ways that we can really make sure that that cemetery stays pristine, up to date. And if you've been there, you've seen the grave markers that are tipped over and being repaired. And so it'll be a little bit of an issue of how do we contact people to make sure they're okay with our suggested repairs? And then the costs of that may be contributed by family members. But there are different ways to do it, and this is a time to explore that. And by having the city appoint a commission of people who are concerned, I think it'll move forward and be very, very positive for that, to make sure that the cemetery stays in good shape and then perhaps allows for what's going to be happening in the future. You know, that cemetery has a limited capacity, so, you know, what would the city like to do beyond that? So, that's basically what we've been working on, and we're very appreciative of the city's ability now to take a look at it and see if this will be in your plans of what should take, what should be happening as a very, very important piece of our community and our history.
Anybody else have questions? Happy to answer them. Glad to be very kind here that you did not point out, this is probably a discussion topic that you guys had probably six or seven years ago. See how much traction it's gotten. But the accurately pulling out historic preservation, I guess, was the first point because it's kind of hanging on their agenda where they need to be freestanding, and that's what I think is going in the right direction there. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Kevin Woods. I'm the adjunct finance officer at The Post, 480 here in town. And my brother Michael is an attendant and commander. To echo Guy a little bit, we've been discussing this for four or five years. Kind of started the conversation, at least with Guy, was that we, in 2014, 15, and 16, The Post and the community raised monies for the existing veterans' memorial that we stood up in 2016. And our concern is primarily the care of the veterans' memorial and secondary veterans' graves in, as though even stated, some disrepair. And we've got extra monies set aside that we solicited donations, that The Post put money in, the city was very generous, and the community members were generous. And we've got all roughly $15,000 set aside. It's not Post money, but there was no vehicle with which to put it. In 2016, Mike and I came and tried to give that money to the city. And at the time, the city said, Marty Christian said, or somebody said, "We don't have a mechanism by which to," which is another reason to have a body of where we can do that. Again, our primary concern is the care of the veterans' memorial, but, you know, it's 80 cubic yards of concrete and stone, it's probably not going anywhere, so I don't know we need all that money. Second is veterans' graves that, you know, through volunteer labor could be restored. One concern I had is if volunteers undertake that, I mean, are they liable, you know, I don't know what the liabilities are. So that's kind of the Post's interest in that. Do you have anything else that The Post would be?
No, that's pretty much.
I mean, at least at this point. Thank you. Oh, I'm not a Mount Vernon resident either, I live in county.
That's funny. A little bit of history of Mount Vernon, though. Questions or comments for the group?
I would just like the public hearing portion of the meeting. Everyone that has been working on this, and I do have to say that when things is, if it's not, it should be very red because in all my time serving, I just had this belief that there was a cemetery commission that took care of things like that. And apparently, when I was on council previously and when I was mayor, nothing like this ever came up. So, I apologize for that. I feel like I've let some people down. So, I appreciate all the effort and the information, and I think it's critical. So, thank you.
This is the beginning of a three hearing, three readings process. So hopefully, you speakers and the people that are involved with that will be, hopefully make yourself available to the sun at some point for an overlapping, you know, big sky article about what's going to be happening there. So I'll cue Nathan in on that at some point over the reading process here. And a minor point here, but I get requests for Eagle Scout projects all the time, and I'm not sure if you want Eagle Scouts doing some of the things in the cemetery, but there may be something that Eagle Scouts could, that is appropriate out there with adult supervision and so on. So, that's something that I'd like to have, to be able to have an answer so, or I want to get that call from a scout leader to say, "Yes, you can do this," or whatever.
Can I add? If I may, please. I really appreciated the historical document that was added to this, in fact, raising up an Eagle Scout project and fixing the gate, the ancient gate that you see when you walk right down Main Street. You can imagine the funeral procession starting here and going down the hill and riding at the cemetery to that gate. And so it was very nice that Mary and others referenced that in the document. And I really think it's a commission per Paul's comment, whose time has come, in my opinion. And so, thanks for bringing this forward.
Correct. Derek Gage, about eight years ago, made a comment about that, since he lives across the street from the oldest part of the cemetery, to say, "We really need to do something like that." I think the time is now, and we need to be the people involved with that. We need to engage. Any other questions of speakers that are here, or any other comments that you'd like to add to this case for this first reading?
I just wanted to thank you all again as well, too, because it is extremely important. And as I was reading through, you know, I'm like, "I'll have a couple of questions." I had no questions. Pretty darning this. It was very well put together, and I really appreciate that. And I know the town's going to as well, so thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'm going to officially close this public meeting, this public hearing, and then go to item F3, which is ordinance approving basically the first reading. So, are we at the point there? Is there one more chance for question and discussion?
Well, I would just make one comment. My mom always said that if Mary Evans is involved, you should be too. So, with that, I would approve of ordinance 6-17-2024A of adopting chapter 28 Cemetery Commission to Mount Vernon Municipal Code.
So, seconded out.
Move the second to for the first reading. And then we'll move on to the second reading, the next meeting, to move forward with ordinance 6172024A. And that is a roll call vote, and I think we are ready.
Turler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
When this approval is moved forward to the next meeting for the second reading. If we're now to item F1, ordinance amendment 99.02, rated Mount Vernon Municipal Code, second reading. I think I saw that there were no further comments at City Hall about that. Any other comments from council about moving forward there?
I just want to reiterate to the public that while our state government touts a surplus and looking at tax breaks and how they are providing all this to the citizens of Iowa, that it's not a zero-sum game. They're playing a shell game with many of us in that they are touting their great job at being fiscally responsible and conservative while pushing unfunded mandates to smaller communities, forcing us to do things like raise our sewer rates by eight percent. And I will tell you that we are a fortunate community based upon what I've read as well as the information that Chris has provided. So, when you see your sewer bill go up and you get a tax break from the state, remember that it's basically going from one bucket to the other, and it is not always what it seems. And with that, I would like to move approval of ordinance 5-20-2024A.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
I want a second. Very well stated, Paul.
All say that that's something that made it, made it inbound. Local control, if we're going to have it or we're not going to have it, so, I'm going to my preaching. Going to push on the floor to approve, second reading, 5202024A. Do we go for the discussion? Marcia, you ready?
Anderson?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes. That ordinance moves on to third reading, the next meeting. We're on to 92.02, new situation of ordinance Municipal Code. Same basic principle here, but any other comments? No comments given at City Hall? Any questions of staff?
I would echo Paul's comments on 2024A and move approval of ordinance 5-20-2024B.
Scott, is there a second? Paul. Move the second to the fourth, second reading. This particular ordinance, we're ready to vote.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That also is approved, and we move on to the third reading, the next.
Before we move on to resolutions, because the mic wasn't working, should we give an opportunity for public comment to these folks?
The very first few minutes were muted.
Okay, well, it's out of order, but if they're here, then they were.
Good catch. What people that are on this.
Joel was actually the reporter.
Pardon?
Joel was the reporter.
Okay, okay. With the I was, with the D.I.S.
He's a.
Okay. And great, did you catch what we're talking about here? That we recognize that you didn't have the capability to enter into the public comment section of the meeting? Do you have any, we're kind of opening that up again. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Maybe you have no comments.
Was that great?
Yeah. No comment.
Thank you all. I'll assume there's no comments there. Do you hear anything?
Yeah, that's why I heard some people say no comments.
Thank you. Well, they said there was no.
Oh, okay, okay.
They were, we just, your mics were muted, so they couldn't hear you. They wouldn't be able to speak in.
Doug, did you forget to turn on the rose?
I did.
But the minister's flag.
Yeah. Oh, she'll remind me.
What means the section G of the meeting, resolutions. First one is with regard to fiscal year transfers.
I don't have a lot to add here, but the resolution itself is pretty self-explanatory. We're required by state code to approve a transfer resolution when we are moving individual funds from one account to another. This is an effort to obviously be transparent with where money is going. If you have any questions on any of the specific transfers, I'd happy to answer them.
Is still ready to last meeting, we'll have transfers?
And this is what you're. By the end of July, we'll probably, you might have another one for next.
For next year.
Comment, questions of staff, otherwise.
I would move to approve resolution 6-17-2024A of approving the fiscal year transfers to wrap up this.
I want a second?
Correct. Proving second is in the form of the transfers for this fiscal year. That is a resolution that needs any roll call vote.
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Next item is moving final flat, Phoenix Third Edition, Lynn County, Iowa.
You have a new resolution that's handed out to you tonight. The difference between the two resolutions is the resolution that is in front of you is basically waiving our right to review on the two mile as opposed to approving. Planning is only wasn't able to have a meeting, so we have to move from a review to a waiver. This is on the border of our two mile jurisdiction, so it's very unlikely that we would ever have to encounter any of these houses or any subventions out there anyway. So, this is fairly difficult when you kind of out there on that pass a mile and a half or from that mile and a half to two mile.
If this is the third edition and we reviewed the.
We reviewed the second edition, but not the first edition.
Does that just building?
We've only had the two mile review for.
Seven years.
I think it was the second year that I came that we implemented two mile review, so.
And my other question would be, does waiving this rate of review.
Open the door.
Yeah, exactly. Cause any problems down the road for reviewing?
No. And it's really, we look at the severity of what they're attempting to do. Obviously, if they were looking at doing it at a ten mile subdivision, it'd be a completely different story for us. But what happens, especially within that two mile, a lot on existing farms, that is they're splitting homes, multiple homes off road.
For tax purposes, for kids and whatnot.
Correct.
Similar to what happened earlier a couple of months ago here in Mount Vernon.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
As you move to approve of resolution 6-17-2024A, the waiver of review of Phoenix Third Edition in Lynn County.
I want a second. Paul Mark? Move the second to move forward on the flat provision, Phoenix, for a year. Had a hard time understanding why we did this six years ago, but now it's just so obvious that the two mile thing, I mean, that's, gives us a heads up, and we're not fighting this, but just to know what's going on out there, and I'm worried about the impact that's down the road, so. Move the second to move forward with 6172024B, and I think we're ready to vote, Marcia.
Turler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Next one is consideration of construction, tying in with City of Lisbon on a business thirty project for later this summer. Overlay on business thirty.
Yeah, so the City of Lisbon is moving forward with their overlay. If I'm trying to take advantage of some economy to scale here and see what the bid would be for our portion, the east half of this city, so from the roundabout east to the Lisbon city limits, bid would be due July 11th with a public hearing July 15th.
This motion officially is set, that's July 15th.
Correct.
I think we talked about this at the last meeting, the concept of whether we were going to do this, but we've got a last thing to do.
Having said that, I would move approval of resolution 6-17-2024C.
Take that. Second?
Second.
Craig on that one. Moving second to fourth, 172024C. Any further questions or comments? Marcia?
Anderson?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
That motion carries. Ignore the next resolution. Direct logic placement to temporary construction easements in City of Mount Vernon for the Glen Street construction project, part of the Codman Apartments project.
So the next two resolutions are necessary easements for the construction of Glen Street and Minish Avenue.
Two resolutions here?
There's two resolutions because one deals with an overlay and co-easement and a temporary construction easement, and the other is a temporary construction easement on what would be the east side of Minish.
Is the motion to move forward?
I would move to move forward with resolution 6-17-2024D approving the storm sewer and overlayed flowage easements.
Craig, is there a second?
Second.
And you, Paul. Move the second to move forward with 2024B. Do we go further questions? Marcia?
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. People were at the same theme there, temporary construction easements for the Codman Apartments project.
I will move to approve of resolution 6-17-2024B.
Take second. Second? Second? Go Craig there. Move the second to enforce the temporary construction easement for the City of Mount Vernon for the Codman Apartments project. You agree, Marcia?
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Want more resolution or construction, certain public improvements? They were here, 2024, and it's our sewer we have project.
This is part of the million-dollar grant that we received from Lynn County Department of Money. So the televising, the cleaning portion of the project has been completed, and now from that televising, there will be a list of projects that will need to be completed as far as corrective actions. We'll basically just go until the money runs out. Same as the business thirty project, we're looking at bids being due on the 11th, and the public hearing on the 15th.
Any questions of staff, or move approval of resolution. Any questions to staff or move approval of Resolution six dash seventeen dash twenty twenty four F? Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second to move forward, six seventeen twenty twenty four F? And Marcia, the floor here.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution moves forward. For the old business discussion consideration of sculpture trail funding request, council action as needed. Are we ready yet?
We are. Need to untable it probably first.
Yes. Similar.
With that.
One second.
Scott, Stephanie, catch that. What we're going on here is to untable that. This is a piece about old business. If you're ready to vote on that, I'll figure that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Floor is now open to discuss sculpture trail funding request.
Park and Rec Board would like to recommend.
Sorry.
The Park and Rec Board would like to recommend taking $10,000 for the next round of the Sculpture Trail out of the lost funds. They have not committed for every other year, but at this point right now, for the next round, they'd like to contribute. And that would be on the capital improvements plan, Chris?
Correct.
Think I saw the pads already board?
This would be for the next round.
For the next round.
They're covering this round, which is leave two structures, two sculptures?
Moving one and adding another.
Which one are you moving, Ellen?
The Lady Hawk is moving from the road down along the creek on the south.
Go left south.
First street. And then the Dragonfly will be going a little bit further south than that.
So this would be for, this would be $10,000 for fiscal year 25, correct? Yes.
What do we need to do here?
So you're gonna need to make a motion to approve if you want to approve. Anybody can make a motion to approve or to not.
I would move to approve the release of $10,000 for Parks and Rec for the Sculpture Garden in fiscal year 2024, 25.
Okay.
So I have a couple of concerns here. One is not a sculpture garden, it's a long trail. So we don't have a designated garden area. You said we're moving sculptures closer to Nature Park?
Is that for me?
No. Whichever one.
So between Nature Park and, at the bottom of the hill on Petrick Trail, on the west side along the creek, there's some berms with plantings there that they thought would look, the Dragonfly would look good on the south gap in between those berms. The Lady Hawk, we thought, was a little too much at the top. So they're trying, I think they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're turning around with a few different things, maybe putting an informational piece on that existing pad, because I'm like, I can't just pull a pad out, move pad. I would like to reuse that for something at some point. But the Lady Hawk will then, we moved at the bottom of the hill to the north of where the Dragonfly is, and those pads are important now if anybody was interested in looking at where those are.
They are not moving anything across the street into Nature Park. It's the Petrick Trail piece.
Yeah.
But it is going toward that direction. All of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the answer to my question. Yes, it's moving.
Closer.
Closer.
Correct.
Infringing on the natural area that we have there. Thank you for that. So my second concern is we have an informational bit added to our information tonight regarding the interurban trail. And you said it was to application for grant funding. So I struggle when we have money set aside to do trails. We're, everyone is very eager to have the interurban trail completed 20 years ago, and we're taking and moving these funds for beautification. And remind me, do we still have a line item for beautification in budget or was that the name?
So the beautification line item actually comes from the Economic Development Fund, which is hotel motel tax.
Okay.
I would tell you that based upon Park and Rec CIP and the fact that the local option sales tax can cover both parks and trails, their project list would outspend the allowable dollars in a half a year. So the truth is, even when we go ahead and moving forward with that second year of application, if it's successful, the councils might have some decisions to make on where the available funds would come from. True, if we didn't happen to get a grant for that section of trail, there's currently cash in the local option sales tax bucket. However, there's also probably a half a million in $600,000 worth of, worth of like CIP-related items that have been sitting on the CIP as well. So there's, there's a lot of ask for those particular dollars, and I don't think relying completely on the local option sales tax to complete both park and trailer is a feasible expectation or should not be a feasible expectation of this council, because it's just not going to happen. Stoneford Park, I think alone is 200 and some thousand, or was estimated at 200 and some thousand, and that's more than what we have in the bucket today.
So there are other funding mechanisms such as the Economic Development Fund that comes from the hotel motel tax to fund sculptures along the trail. I'm not even starting, I'm a firm believer that it's what makes us human and unfortunately, I think oftentimes in the United States, we don't emphasize it enough as we do in other countries. I can say that as a first generation American, think of my homeland, Switzerland, as a fine example, buildings being art and art being a passion. So I want to make very clear that I'm not even starting in parks. I just can, fiscally speaking, funding mechanisms are in place to fund what the intent is. And we need to be careful when we do that. When I think of the interurban trail and I think of the economic development that's occurred in Ely, Robbins, now up through the additional paved portion of the Cedar Valley Trail to Urbana, the addition of the trail paved south of Ely to Solon. Those trails are economic machines, and I would tell you that unfortunately for me, I have to go to those communities to enjoy my bicycling time and spending time with friends in those communities, spending money, my dollars there, when I could have friends riding out here along the interurban trail to generate economic development that could then help fund art along the trail. So I'm very passionate about this. You've heard it before, I'll say it again. We need to think hard about the decisions we make and not cater to every whim because it feels good. So that's my take.
I'm gonna echo that sentiment as well. We have, is it our, yeah, third would be the third installation. We don't even have the second one yet. But tonight I was, you know, asking for more information regarding what we have the funds in pockets and the cost of the projects and stuff, so we got to that, but it sounds like the Parks and Rec just said, you know, $10,000 is what they would like. $10,000 every year is, you know, it adds up, and I just kind of am going along with what Paul says in different fucking mechanisms.
Well, let's be clear about a couple of things. They're not asking for $10,000 on an annual basis. They're making a one-time ask. They haven't passed, and that's not to say they won't again, but all we're talking about right now was a one-time ask of $10,000. Secondly, Paul, you've talked a lot about the intent of the lost vote, and I want to thank Matt for doing some research on our behalf and going back to the vote from 2011. The specifics of the language say 10% for parks and recreational trails. It doesn't say park trails, it doesn't say recreational trails, it says parks and recreational trails. And Matt, remind me again, what is the land that this, that these sculptures are being installed upon?
The land?
Yeah, what's it called?
Petrick?
Petrick.
Or Petrick?
Park?
Trail portion?
Okay.
That's what we call it?
All right, okay. So because, I mean, if we're gonna talk about the intent of the voters, we need to look at the language of what they voted upon and set aside 10% for parks and recreational trails. Now, you can be against using money for this specific issue, but if we're gonna talk about the intent of the voters, let's be clear about what they were actually voting upon.
So.
And it was parks and recreational trails.
So I'm glad you brought that up, Scott, because I was here when we had the discussions of the intent of the council at that time about what these were, and the definition of parks and trails were, in my memory, very specific of parks and trails in the traditional sense. That would be trails for bicycling and walking, it would be for park improvements for recreational activities. It would not fall under the category of beautification and art installations. At that time, that was never even a consideration of what those monies would be spent for. And so, yes, it was vague, and I understand that, but I also, having been here, know what those discussions were. Now, that's not to say this council can't change its mind. It certainly can. That's part of the reason things are oftentimes left vague. I just again feel very strongly that the usage of these funds, when there are other mechanisms in place, is not a wise decision. Thank you.
Well, and I guess I lost track a little bit. I was interrupted there, pardon me. Then I recall about a year and a half ago, if I'm correct, when Superintendent Bateman once was here, when they were setting up the trails outside of the athletic complex, he came and gave us, or gave, pardon me, I wasn't part of the council, but was here. He went up there and said, you know, if possible, $30,000 would help with the walk pass at the school. So that council gave, instead of $30,000, gave, I think, the amount was $43,000, and that came out of trails, if I'm correct, Chris, that came out of trails also. So we can't just keep pulling money from this fund, in my opinion, so that's why I'm gonna have to say on this round, I'm just not there.
And I would point out that that was used for lighting and for the trail, which that trail on school property is a connective piece of our entire community trail plan that Parks and Rec has laid out some time ago. So I have no heartburn about using that because it's safety trail, community-wide. But Mark's point about pulling funds for every opportunity, again, I understand and feel that way as well.
I do want to point out that this request was not a surprise to me at all, because when the Arts Council came to us to propose the first phase, although we made no promises for future phases, we did know that two more were gonna come upon us.
You have any questions or comments or anything to add, staff?
I do want to apologize, I'm marketing to interruption.
I think we've got three choices in front of us. We can support, endorse the $10,000 out of lost funds, we can vote it down, or we can table it. Am I missing anything?
We have a motion.
Okay, we have to move forward with that. Okay. Is there any more discussion about that motion then? And the motion is to support the $10,000 at this point, is that correct? There's no other questions or comments. We'll call the vote and.
I need a second.
I agree with Scott.
Okay, sorry. Okay, sorry.
That was old. Yeah.
That's what I asked. You got, moving second to move forward with a $10,000 contribution to the sculpture trail funding request out of lost. Correct the motion? Okay, if you're ready to vote on that, all of you, that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? I hear three, two, is that correct? So that motion moved forward on the three, two vote to support $10,000 to the sculpture trail funding request. Parks and Rec, what's the first approval? The first item is claims lists. Marcia sent down the second copy this afternoon. Any questions on the claims list of staff, we'll move forward on that approval.
I move approval of the claims list as presented.
Except, sir, second? Second. Senator Paul, so who's the second to approve the claims list? And all of you, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion consideration of appointment of the executive director of Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group, Council Action as Needed. Frankly, we have Lisa White here to speak to that, so. Name and address.
Hello, Lisa White, resident of Mount Vernon, and on behalf of the Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group, I'm pleased to forward a candidate to you for the executive director position for the CDG, Jessie Boon.
Jessie Boon?
Some of you may know Jessie already. She currently holds a role of assistant manager at Bowman's, where she has been since 2021. She has 17 years of customer service experience, but beyond that, has experience in project management, experience in IT. She's extremely detail oriented, is something that we included on in our interview with her, is very focused on continuous improvement, and has exceptional marketing skills, written, ads, social media, et cetera, et cetera. So the committee made up of three members of the CDG board, myself, Bernadine Lindenberg, Casey O'Connor, Chris Nausvich was representative for the City of Mount Vernon, John Barnsley from the City of Lisbon, and Olivia Randall, as the business leader. Agreed that Jessie would be an excellent candidate to kind of take us to the next level for this organization. And so with that, what the board, the CDG board approved was a salary of $65,000 and PTO, starting with a bank of 80 hours and then 16 hours a month, the second tier of PTO accrual, matching what Jessie has with her previous employer. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Would you move on that second tier, Lisa?
Sorry, I'm probably, Chris, please.
So, we have three tiers of accrual, twelve, sixteen, and twenty. During the appointment, council can give credit for past years of service in a like-type position. So, instead of starting at the accumulation of twelve PTO hours per month, she would start at sixteen PTO hours per month, which is pretty standard when we're trying to get an executive level position.
First of all, congratulations.
And the benefits would stay with this city?
Correct. The reason that, yeah, the reason the council makes the appointment is, in the ordinance, you have the right to hire a fighter, so you have to basically sign off on the development itself.
There's some official training orientation that Main Street Iowa does. I'm sure you'll do something here locally, but there is that tool that will go through Main Street.
Absolutely, yes. Both in-person and additional online workshop, actually a required workshop through Main Street Iowa. There are multiple such workshops offered throughout the year, so the one closest to the start date. So yes, we are actually kind of starting to work through first draft of, of our onboarding and training plan right now. So yes, it will be, I think, you know, that's what, I'll be honest, I think that's one of the challenging things with this role, is you have a volunteer board to whom this director reports. And so, and they are the only employee in that, in that role, right? And so, so it, we're very conscientious about the fact that we want any person starting in this role to feel supported and, and well-trained and have the resources that they need to not feel like they're kind of floating out there without, without a raft. So we are really working hard to come up with a plan that, that gives the support that Jessie would need to have success.
Chris, the question I have is, do we move to appoint? Or do we move to approve the recommendation?
You can do either, technically speaking, it's your appointment. We had made the agreement with CDG when we started this, that we would wait to make any appointment upon the recommendations. Either motion is what we go.
With that, I will move to appoint based upon the CDT recommendation, Jessie.
Thern.
Thern.
T-H-A-M.
Thank you. To the executive director position.
I'll second.
Move the second to appoint Jessie Thern, the director of the CDG. Questions? Should this be dependent upon Lisbon approving as well? I mean, are they doing it tonight? Does that have to, no, because this is our employee, they share responsibilities between the communities, okay.
Once the, the board will act as a representative of four communities, there's the director that shares up to the city.
So those are those, okay, good. Are we ready to move forward on that appointment? All of them, who say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Maybe you should ask while doing it, when do they start?
Full-time begin, or pretty much full-time, July fifteenth. However, she has agreed to work out a, a plan to kind of shadow for both Natty Grady and Heritage Days. Obviously, two big festivals coming up before she was available to do it in full-time, so.
She makes way for, is that her husband or is it, is Eric?
I don't know. That would be the, I'm sure.
We don't, obviously, we don't talk about that.
I suppose not, yeah.
Some questions?
Yeah.
That's right. It's her family.
Yeah, she's married to a brother.
Yeah.
TJ, I think.
Oh, TJ, yeah. Of course, you file, Mount Vernon Lisbon Police Report.
Thank you. One correction, thanks to Mayor for catching on us. Community service portion on page one. Sergeant Dobbs and Officer Ford attended the WETAP event at Washington Elementary on the last day of school where they had the, they were going to have the helicopter committee, but it didn't come, I don't think it made it this year, again, from lifeguard from St. Luke's Hospital. But we, we participated in that event last year and again this year. A lot of fun, a lot of good time there, so. Beyond that, the only additional thing that's not in the report is Canine Outing was Friday. We had a blast, we had a good time, we had a full, full roster, eighteen teams and sponsors. So we'd like to thank them for everything that they did. It was a great tournament, great day, weather cooperated, and we got off on time, and no casualties that I know of other than my score, so.
Good. Any questions of Chief Shannon, otherwise moving the public works? Eldon, I've been around having, ending a report with them. A good quote, any other questions on this here?
Come on, let me have it.
I mean, you know, we've said it a hundred times, but, you know, the, the work that Jane did down at the, well, the triangle by our house, our houses, we all live together, but, you know, in our neighborhood, is, is starting to come in and looks fantastic. And to see the condition of these roofs is a good thing we were dealing with that. So thank you.
Set in on me this afternoon with a couple of citizens from the State Building Committee on establishment of prairie, and this has been a long, long process, that I, that I can lead, that, that members of the committee need to lead this, and they have had great input and time with, with Eldon, but also with Ted, our new employee, and also Jane, and they've had great insight on that, so it was a great hire. Kind of along the same line of what Jane's been doing around the community, but it's how the public works. Parks and Rec report, they came over this afternoon, any questions of Matt? Really rough.
Nothing to add.
About time. This little group is pretty rough. Questions of Parks and Rec? Collier report? Chris is not here, but. Discussion items, pro action, full ordinance, whether they debate, make, tobacco, significant products, et cetera.
So at the beginning of your six-month moratorium, the moratorium was put in place, obviously, for you to consider the potential of adopting an ordinance that would regulate these establishments. So what you have in front of you tonight is what I'll call the shell of an ordinance, that it provides the outline for potentially moving these use forward. I don't need action tonight, I wanted to get this in front of you. Unless you're, at this point, disinterested in moving forward with an ordinance, the next step would be to move forward with attorney review. Because that costs money, I just wanted to get this in front of you, make sure that you're still asking us to pursue the potential for an ordinance to, to review at a later date. If not, we can stop and then save a little bit of money.
Based on input I've heard from our community members, I think it's the right thing for us to move forward with this ordinance.
I've, I've heard different opinions, to be honest. And I believe that the state has taken care of a lot of the questions that we had when this came up. So when that, when this came up, and we decided on the moratorium, we didn't know what the state was going to do with the CBD and, and all those projects. And what we've seen is they, they've very much limited the contents, you know, the CBD level contents, to where it is very miniscule. And to people who use it for pain relief and are prescribed it, it, it doesn't do much good, but that's going to be thrown. But some of the measures in here are just, you know, a thousand feet of where, you know, pretty much anywhere in town, you know, including where children play, well, you can call that anywhere. But I do believe that the state is kind of, can hear that, you can't go twenty-one into any of those shops, I mean, that's a state law now. So I'm a little bit, I'm certainly much less interested in it now, especially that it's been quite a while since we've got it, and I don't believe anybody's tried to apply for any more businesses. I don't think it's booming business now that the state has come in either, so. That's just where I stand at the moment.
Staff that is asking not for action, but whether to, the thumbs up comes down, move on forward to propose for further discussion of possible action. Any other opinions? To Mark's point, how literal is the thousand-foot rule?
So my, I will tell you that as soon as the attorneys get a hold of this, they will probably tighten that language up. Proximity ordinances are fairly common, and they've been fairly common in zones since zoning was established in New York many years ago. But you can't regulate the business, meaning you can't outlaw or ban, all-out ban, typical uses, but you can control the amount of square footage that they can be used in, the proximity to churches, and probably what's going to happen would be church, park, school, any other public gathering place as defined by, by council.
Bucket first.
Would be, because it's considered a park, would be a thousand feet as well. And then there's, you know, there's a question of whether or not, once this ordinance goes to effect, we can really get into these, but councils can set a deadline, whereas they could get, you know, economic vitality from the business, so you could say in two years, they would have to meet these guidelines. Go a lot of different directions with this, but for this particular point, it would be something for the attorneys to kind of shore up the language, that they would be comfortable, you know, being in court, so.
In the, in that same vein, the, I am in that list of where these types of businesses can be located. Talks about L1 light industrial, where would that be in town?
We have a small portion of L1 industrial in Hyatt One.
North side, like.
Hill Run Bill.
Hills, Hill Run Bill, that area.
But you'd be close to a park. Two parks.
So I, if I can make a really fast comparison, because how adult, elaborate establishments are regulated as well?
I would, I would like to move forward.
With discussion?
With further discussion and, and in terms of payment.
I would too.
So that's three, that's a majority of the fellow leaders, and no, we'll continue to move forward, and the next stage will be reviewed by the city.
That's uncertain, and you've got enough to go with?
Yeah, and just, just remember that all, all we did tonight was say, yeah, keep plotting away, the, the ordinance itself will be voted out during the public hearing, you know, in the future.
Sounds good. Moving on to the second item, this was added to the agenda, special grant application in, for the urban trail.
City staff is going to refer a letter of support, that will be signed by the mayor and wanted to make sure he understood that we were doing it. The interurban trail has been a priority for this council since I came here eight years ago, so with the addition of Lee, she's been working on some grant applications. Again, how we match those grant funds, we will have to determine, but we're essentially saying that, yes, we believe in the trail, and two, we would put a monetary amount to Canine to receive grant dollars.
Where would those funds come from?
So at this point, you have many options, franchise fees, local, CO tax, bonds, but it just kind of depends on how much it end up being. So I can tell you that we, we haven't received a formal application, but we have been in discussion with a property owner along the pathway, and we believe that one of those landowners owns a majority of property along that two Irish lane, is willing to annex to the city, so our section of trail could potentially double, but that annexation will take approximately six months to, to work through the process as well, so, you know, just kind of depends. This could be a, a multi-phase approach to use our grant monies, determine, so, yeah, there's a lot of question marks at this point, but.
Thank you.
Just basically wanted to reaffirm our commitment to, to grants.
Paul's comments earlier tonight about the value of trails as part of economic development driver, I would add that as probably an expectation for new residents in the community to have something like trails. I had the opportunity first tonight at an event that I was attending in Alliance Center, the Sioux Rapids, to sit at the next table with Ron Corbett, the three of his senior staff, and I made sure that, when, that I had the opportunity to tell Ron to say that this was Albert, you know, Corl Brad, he is obviously focused on economic development, to say, hey, Mary O'Donnell, every time I talk to her, she's ready for the Sioux Rapids. Lynn County is obviously the, the big player, Charlie, Lynn County Conservation is Dennis Coman, I think his name is, like that. And our last meeting with Alliance, with our account manager, Emily, Emily Upah Kaiser, and with Dennis Jordan from, who's on our CDG board, talked about that, and they are big in this economic development. So I was disappointed when I saw the headline in the paper this morning, of the fold is that about some big-dollar amounts of trails, but when I read the article, it's for the, yeah, it's, it's, check, no, it's, it's not, it's not us, it's not us. But we keep bringing it up often enough, Chris and I talked about it with Charlie McClintock at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, so, I mean, keep getting out there, and I, in my dissertation to Ron Corbett that I sent one day, with the history of the trail, I reminded him that the one-hundred-year anniversary of the trail is twenty-six, I think, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, so it'd be a great anniversary, you might have to be able to say reopen it as a, a big extension to Sioux Rapids, so keep that thing going. Any else on discussion items? Otherwise, Mayor's reports, I don't think it's been mentioned yet, but Joe Jensen's event is six-twenty-five next weekend, or next week, I should say. And I was asked to speak two Saturdays from now at Newgo Area on the Pride Fest event that they have going on there, I think I did this last year, all I had. Any council reports, committee reports? Anything of Chris, what's any managers' report?
No, one thing I did, one thing, reiterating, kind of sit on, is the importance of the human trafficking, and half-staffed, and something I just found on the radar for a while, just calling the signs, and you hate the, the.
And it's a, it's a very common sign, everybody should know that sign, you know.
So the only reason I bring that up, obviously, is City Hall could be, the hours could be disrupted for two to three hours on that particular day.
Thanks for reminding us of that.
Speaking of City Hall, with the temperatures, it's going to be open as of Florida Station this week, correct?
As of, yeah, it will be open during Monday, as of right now. Temperatures are supposed to stay above the eighty-five until next Monday, so.
And is the Bird Center also considered?
The Bird Center is not only in that, it does not have its generator yet, so. So technically speaking, if we lost power. But PD, the lobby of PD is a secondary if in emergency situations. But we encourage everybody to come here. Police Department has access to you, cameras, so they can monitor traffic in and out, so. And we have, obviously, a generator here out of loss, so.
Well, obviously, if somebody needs it, we'll allow them.
Yes, I mean, we would never turn anybody away. Just don't advertise the LBC yet.
That's why, yeah, I didn't, I don't want to.
There are, the second part to that is obviously the state areas have the opportunities for storms. And this is also considered a storm.
Any questions of staff, Chris? Any questions that come before this council is meeting? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
It's gonna be fun.
I don't know, I have a black ball.
I think we use a little third person.
I just didn't want people driving.
Are you trying to give me a complex or what?
So I go to take a drink of water, as you're gonna call the roll, and I'm like, please don't make it one where I'm the last guy. Please don't make it one where, and of course, so now I'm an idiot. Well, most likely.